We're gonna, we're fixing to get started. As you can see, we're absent the mayor and in his absence, the mayor pro tem takes over the presiding judge. In the case of having both the mayor and the mayor pro tem absent the charter, section six of the charter calls for the city commission to elect by majority of the commission a presiding mayor pro tem just for the meeting. And at this point, the commission would have to entertain that discussion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the senior commissioner, Danny Castillo.
I'll second that.
As the presiding mayor pro tem for this evening.
We have an agenda second, so I know you would vote on that. All is in favor of Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Then Commissioner Castillo is now appointed as the presiding officer.
I'm gonna call our meeting to order. Right now it's 5:38 PM. Meeting's been duly posted. Calling to me to order, I have Pastor Mark Molina that will lead us in our location tonight.
Sir, if it's past 5:30, you're breaking the law because the meeting was supposed to start at 5:30. You're breaking the law. This is not a legal meeting.
Let's pray, please. Father, we thank you for today. We ask your blessing upon this house, your peace in our midst. Bless our leaders, bless those in attendance. Keep our mayor safe, our pro tem. Help him to heal, touch his body. Let your wisdom rule here tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic with which is cast one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, this is a legal meeting. This is a legal meeting.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to our meeting. First item up on the agenda is public announcement of an event. Do we have somebody? Pastor Molina?
I am Captain Dolores Watts and my husband and I are responsible for the Salvation Army in Harlingen. Ever since the Harlingen Chamber of Congress invited the Salvation Army to begin work here in 1928, we have been doing the most good in Cameron County. And this year, we are so excited to be celebrating 85 years of serving the physical, emotional, and spiritual needs of this community. This Saturday, February 23rd, we would like for you to join our anniversary celebration from 11:00 AM until 1:00 PM at Lieutenant George Cugenes Park located at 500 West Harrison Street. During this free event, we will be serving hot dogs, chips, and of course, cake. We anticipate having some 300 people in attendance, including the clients that we work with, our volunteers, our supporters, and our partner agencies. Entertainment will be provided by Harlingen ISD and the Salvation Army Children's Home for Matamoros. The Salvation Army is extremely grateful for the continued support of the city of Harlingen and the general community. In addition to our regular church programs, the Salvation Army is at work 365 days per year, 24/7, ready to help people with emergency utilities, emergency rent, food, clothing vouchers, prescription, emergency transportation, and much more. In 2012, we served 2,155 individuals, close to 500 families, and we provided more than over 1,000 articles of clothing. And we helped 171 households with utility bills. And since November 2012, we have provided 430 pairs of new shoes to needy schoolchildren. Some of our advisory board members are here tonight, and I'm gonna invite them to stand. And I want to give them a hand tonight. They are valuable to the service of the Salvation Army and to this wonderful community. On behalf of the Salvation Army, I thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening, and we look forward to doing the most good in Cameron County for another 85 years and beyond. Thank you.
My name is Mark Molina. I'm a local pastor, and I've been leading a committee of citizens that have been planning and working together for the last several months to plan the second annual Mayor-Oprah Breakfast for the city of Harlingen. That date is March 7th, 7:00 AM to 8:30 AM at the Harlingen Community Center. That is a Thursday. It is an event that is free to the public. We have raised funds from several corporate and individual private sponsors. And at the event, both high schools will be performing, both high school choirs, both ROTC programs. St. Anthony's Choir will also be performing. Our keynote speaker this year is Joe Perez with the ongoing theme of hope in the community. Harlingen Outreach Center is again this year going to be the recipients of funds in support of their overall outreach to the community. So, no one can get in without a ticket because of fire code issues. We had to obey the law. So, I have 12 tickets here. I'd like to leave with someone and a flyer explaining that. Last year was a great event. We had almost 500 people in attendance for the first time in the history of the city. And we sincerely and genuinely ask you to consider coming out and sharing this moment with us once again. We'd like to thank Mayor Boswell for lending his office to this event. It's gonna be a great community, a great community event. And again, the theme again this year is hope in the community for the city of Harlingen. Thank you.
Pastor, I really appreciate you making that presentation. I know that was well-attended last year, so I'm pretty sure we're gonna have a very good turnout. I know you already ran short on tickets, so...
Yes, sir. There are tickets available, thank you, ma'am, at St. Albans on Austin. They have surplus of tickets available there. St. Albans, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make an announcement. The Three Rotary Clubs of Harlingen and the Rotary Club of San Benito, tomorrow, 6 o'clock at Fair Park, the building in Fair Park, we're having our 15th annual shrimp fest, shrimp boil. Tickets are $20. There is silent auction, there is live auction. We raise probably about $40,000 net, and we distribute, all the clubs distribute that back into the community to very worthwhile projects and organizations.
Did staff have any other announcements? There being none, we'll move on to the next item, board recognition. Commissioner Mesmar had some presentations to make. Is Joe come through? Ashley Parker? If you could please come up. And then Ruthie Evers, if you could please come up.
Anyway, I'd like to say hello to Ashley Parker and thank you for your, all your work you're doing on the Parks Advisory Board. And I appreciate it, and the city of Harlingen appreciates it. Thank you very much. And this is Ruthie Evers, and I want to say thank you for everything you do for the senior citizens advisory board and everything else. Thank you very much.
This will take a photograph.
All right. Done.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be approval of minutes. We've got the special meeting for August 27th of 2012, and we also have the special meeting of December 31st, 2012. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions?
I have one on page two of December the 31st. Towards the bottom, it's on line 31. It says HA should be AJ.
Any others? No, no, no. It's on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Go over to the consent agenda, item 4A and B. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda as stated.
You have a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mesmar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Go over item number five. Consider and take action to approve the municipal maintenance agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for maintenance of the non-controlled and controlled access highways.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. This request is a renewal of municipal maintenance agreement with Texas. It expired back in 2009. And this agreement defines the authority and responsibility of both parties to do the maintenance and through the city of Harlingen. Staff recommends approval.
The question said it expired in 2009?
Yes.
And it's 2013, what happened in the interim?
We just received this year, like in December, a renewal.
We continue having the original agreement in '09, and we had to wait, we had to send updated.
Okay, so it's up to the state to...
Right.
Any other questions? Discussion?
Were there any major changes between '09 and '13?
No, no.
Yeah, I kinda read through it. It looked kinda basic and standard.
Yeah, they were pretty standard.
If they waited so long.
Now, we are gonna have a separate landscape maintenance agreement for maintenance of the expressway and the spurty floor, but that'll come at a later date.
That's not included in this package?
No, that'll be sometime in the morning. Any other questions? Discussion?
Make a motion for number five to consider and take action to approve the municipal maintenance agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation, otherwise known as Texas Department for Maintenance of the Non Controlled and Controlled Access Highways.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Item number six, consider and take action to approve and adopt a resolution supporting the municipal maintenance agreement between the Texas Department of Transportation and the city of Harlingen.
As for the terms of the municipal maintenance agreement with Texas, a resolution is required in order to provide support for the agreement. Staff recommends approval.
Have a motion? Does anybody have any questions on that? This is basically another procedural thing?
It's a resolution, right.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion passes. Item number seven, consider and take action to authorize a city engineer to negotiate award contracts for RFQ 2012-11 geotechnical and construction materials testing services with the top three qualified firms.
This item was previously presented to the city commission, and the commission requested that staff review the CIQ forms. Staff did review CIQ forms and instructions, and staff maintains the recommendation of issuing a two-year contract with LNG, Millennium, and Earthco. Staff recommends approval.
I remember from this meeting before, I believe it was Raba?
Yes.
Who brought up an objection to it. I noticed that the CIQ form again is not signed.
Right, they turned in the sample, still didn't sign, and they...
The second half around?
Oh, no, they didn't turn in anything.
Okay. I'll make a motion to take action to authorize the city engineer to negotiate award contracts for RFQ 2012-11 geotechnical construction materials testing services with the top three qualified firms as stated.
I'll second that.
There's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion passes. Item number eight.
Mayor Commissioners, this variant was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It would require a forceful vote by the city commission if the city commission wanted to overturn the planning and zoning deniedness. Staff would recommend that we pass on this agenda item and bring it back at a later date.
I'll make a motion that we pass on this item.
Second.
There's a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion's passed. Item number nine, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 830 Morgan Boulevard bearing a legal description of lots 21 through 26, Rio Land Subdivision. The applicant is Elmer Capuchinos-Capuccines.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. The applicant requests a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge out of an existing 3,000 square foot building that's located on the east side of Morgan Boulevard. This is the subject property, you can see a view of this building here. This is a sign kind of the proposed use. The previous use was established, it was a bar lounge, and then prior to that, the original use was a restaurant. It was a Mexican restaurant prior to that, and then before that, it was a Chinese restaurant. Said the bar is a 3,000 square foot building, is complying with required parking and the hours of operation for the establishment of a general vehicle Tuesday through Sunday. Tuesdays and Wednesdays be open from 3:00 PM to 12:00 midnight. From Thursdays through Saturdays, be open from 3:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And on Sundays, it be open from 7:00 PM to 12:00 midnight. This request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments, fire prevention, health department, and building inspection department. Neither of the subject departments had any objections to the request subject to complying with the required conditions. The police department also provided a report which showed the establishment had within a two-year period 110 calls, nine of which generated incident reports. This is a general view, if you look at it from the north, this is the establishment which would be in this location here. This is if you're looking at the establishment from the south. And let me just note, since then, the applicant has restripped the parking lot, so it looks a little bit in better condition than this. And this is if you're looking facing the building from the west. There will be outdoor seating, as you can see, three tables, but no outdoor entertainment. A public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was a concern at the meeting concerning the noise levels, specifically when they opened the doors, and they could hear the music from the, I guess, the property owners to, I guess, to the west. There's some residential land use, you can see along the west side, although the front is mainly commercial. You also have residential land use on the east side, but there was concern when the doors are open, they could hear some music. The P&amp;Z Commission recommended that the applicant provide an entry vestibule in the front of this entry to the door, which would help regulate the noise level. The applicant was advised of that request. As I said, staff is recommending approval subject to the permit being later to one year, and mission to the applicant maintaining the required solid fence and area of property, maintaining the required parking, providing licensed security guard, excuse me, during peak hours of operation, and maintaining a 30-day retention of video, as well as maintaining his proper permits and, of course, complying with the required city regulations and appropriate state departments. The P&amp;Z Commission also recommended approval with those same conditions, with the additional stipulations of maintaining the property and providing that entry vestibule. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is present for questions.
Okay, so the entry vestibule will be built?
That's correct. It's gonna be a requirement of the ordinance.
Okay, and so we could pass this tonight, but they will not get their certificate until that is built?
Right, correct.
I did see the report as far as the planning and zoning meeting, and the recommendation was made on that vestibule.
Right.
And I believe it's in the caption in the language of the proposed ordinance, but it's not in the executive summary?
No, it's not in the executive summary. That's the summary that was turning after the package. Well, no, we did include the vote, but it is included in the revised ordinance.
I noticed there was something in here about the vestibule on the ordinance, but what was not included on there was the condition to keep the property in a tidy shape. I noticed from the, there's a lot of grass and weeds on that lot. It looks almost abandoned.
And that picture, since then, like you did remove the grass, you did restructure the parking lot, so it looks a lot better condition than at this point. This is a picture that was about a couple of weeks old.
And will that language also be in there?
It would be incorporated in there, and it should be in there, but it would be a requirement to maintain the property.
We need to have a public hearing?
Yes.
Any other questions for staff at this point? Just while I'm gonna open up the public hearing, does anybody that would like to speak for or against this item? We step forward. There being none, I'll close the public hearing.
An ordinance amending, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 7-27 of the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Elmer Capuccinos to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 830 Morgan Boulevard bearing a legal description of lots 21 through 26, Rio Land Subdivision. Subject to, one, the specific use permit be limited to one year, and the applicant would be required to apply for renewal. Two, maintaining the required off-street parking spaces. Three, obtaining and maintaining the proper permits from the state. Four, providing and maintaining video surveillance on all entrances and exits, and maintaining a 30-day retention of the video. Five, provide adequate lighting on the premises. Six, provide a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation from Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Seven, maintaining the property. Eight, constructing an entry vestibule with plans approved by the building inspections, fire prevention, and planning and zoning departments. And nine, comply with requirements administered by the building inspections, fire prevention, health, planning, and zoning, and police departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
You have a motion?
It's on the movement.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion passes. First reading? Item number 10, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 407 West Harrison Avenue bearing a legal description of lots 8 and 9, Harlingen original town site. Applicant is Joy Macheco.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, the applicant's request is a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge out of a 1,000 square foot building that's located on 407 West Harrison, or actually, it's on Harrison, north of C Street. Previous use of the bar, the establishment has always been a bar, the applicant wants to continue that use and even the same name, it's a bar. The hours of, the hours of operation generally be, or days of operation generally be from Monday through Saturday. This request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments, specifically fire prevention department, building inspections, health department. Neither of the subject departments had any objections to the request subject to complying with appropriate codes. The police department also reviewed the request as recommended the applicant provide proper lighting and security and surveillance video on premises. He also provided a report, it's in your packet, which shows the establishment in a two-year period had 13 calls at the establishment, two of which generate police reports. Public hearing was conducted by this establishment, effective property owners within 200-foot radius were notified. Staff didn't receive any objections to requests, and there was no concerns during the public hearing. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission recommend approval subject to the permit being ended to one year, and to the applicant maintaining their required state permits, providing the required lighting, providing a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, and maintaining a 30-day retention of the video, as well as complying with the requirements from the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
Any questions?
Is this the one that has the, you can see through the opening, is there a little plaza posita there on the property? Or am I thinking of someplace else?
I think this was somewhere else. This one is actually, this is actually a process free from this establishment.
Well, I mean, within the walls of the property. It's not open here.
No, it's not open, no.
No other questions for staff? We're gonna open up the public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak for or against this item? We step forward. There being none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'll read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 7-27 of the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Joy Macheco to allow a bar lounge in a general retail zone located at 407 West Harrison Avenue bearing a legal description of lots 8, 8 through 9, Harlingen original town site. Subject to, one, the specific use permit shall be limited to one year, and the applicant would be required to apply for renewal. Two, maintain the required off-street parking spaces. Three, must obtain and maintain the proper state permits. Four, providing a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Five, providing video surveillance and maintaining a 30-day retention of the video. Six, providing sufficient lighting inside and outside the building. And seven, complying with requirements administered by the building inspection, planning and zoning, health, fire prevention, and police departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Any chain of motion by Commissioner?
Commissioner, could I just make a correction on the maintaining of the off-street parking spaces? This one wouldn't have to maintain the off-street parking spaces because it's in the La Posita districts, and they're exempt from parking, so that would have to be, if it may be deleted from the ordinance.
I need to make a motion for the second reading. If you approve it on first reading, he can make that adjustment, have it corrected for the second reading.
So we can make a motion without one stipulation pending the second reading? To have motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it with the amendment of the off-street parking.
There's a second?
There's a second.
Motion a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion passes on the first reading. Police staff added recommendation on item number 11?
Yes, sir. Staff has recommended that we pass on this agenda item, we are awaiting additional information.
Okay. You have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we table it.
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Same side. Item is tabled. Item number 12, consider and take action to approve and adopt a resolution in the city of Harlingen, Texas to amend resolution number R13-27 of the city of Harlingen to designate one, additional polling place for District 2, and one, additional polling place for District 4, to meet the demands and density needs of the voting population in Districts 2 and 4, for the city general election to be held on Saturday, May 11th, 2013, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Commissioner Castillo, and this item was placed on the agenda because it would add additional polling places. Staff does not have the authority to create the polling places, so it has to come before the city commission. The reason that it came to you was because those two districts are kinda centrally located, and the voting precincts are not split, or they're not part of, and this is where most of the population density is, so it's before you for approval. The school has already approved seven, two polling places, so it's just a matter of the city commission, getting permission from the city commission to create those two polling places.
So basically, the school district has already made that approval of utilizing the same additional polling places?
Yes, sir. They passed the resolution on February 12th.
Any other questions, gentlemen? I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, on number 12, consider and take action to approve and adopt the resolution of the city of Harlingen, Texas to amend resolution number R13-27 of the city of Harlingen to...
dash twenty-seven to the City of Harlingen to designate one additional polling place for District Two and one additional polling place for District Four to meet the demands and density needs of voting populations in Districts Two and Four for the general election to be held on Saturday, May eleventh, two thousand and thirteen.
My second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approved. Item number eleven, consider and take action to approve an interlocal agreement between the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District and the City of Harlingen to share polling places, equipment, and election personnel.
Commissioners, this is a contract between the city and the school. I understand that this is, this contract has been previously approved by the city commission on previous joint elections, and basically it's just to share the election personnel on the day of the election, the equipment and the programming, so the cost will be shared by the two entities. Early voting will be separate. They will have their early voting at their side, and we will have our early voting at their side in the mission.
Bottom line, it's safe to smile.
Yes.
There are no other questions? I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District and the City of Harlingen to share polling places, equipment, and election personnel.
Your second?
Yeah, my second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item's approved. Item number fourteen, consider and take action to approve the city manager's recommendation on the appointment of part-time presiding municipal court judges.
Mayor Commissioner, we have our municipal judge that will be making a presentation. They've done some interviews, and we do have a recommendation for the commissioner.
Mayor Proten, city commissioners, Mr. Yerena. Basically, when we started the process, we had four part-time municipal judges assisting one full-time judge, myself. From then, we lost one judge. We were down to three. We were making do, and now we're down to two. The last one, Judge Midas, who was a retired customs officer, who was also had been working part-time municipal judge in LeFaria, was working here with us. And as an example, I will tell you that, for instance, this last month, February, the shortest month of the whole year, twenty-eight days, the two judges that are available to me right now, each one are attorneys, they are practicing attorneys and have an active business, they were available, each one of whom, seven days. That means that out of the twenty-eight days, there was fourteen days that we did not have another judge available to handle the magistrations and arraignments, which we do every day in the morning. We also do so in the afternoon also, but they were basically doing the morning magistrations. So of those fourteen days, I would do the magistrations and arraignments and the normal court docket. So what that entailed was that somebody had to wait longer. Either did the magistrations first, that means all the people who were coming in for mostly traffic violations, had to wait until I finished them, or I would do the court docket and then those people in jail that would be, had to be magistrate, bond set for the higher violations, and payment arrangements made for the Class E, they would have to wait. And an extreme example was last week, I believe, that I did not finish the court docket till about noon, and I did not finish with the magistrations till about quarter of two in the afternoon. So there was a definite delay in handling all the processes that we had. And most of these people are citizens of the City of Harlingen, so we'd like to try to do it as quickly and as expeditiously as we can. So right now, we have a somewhat rare opportunity that I would like to go back to the four-judge format, because that gives us greater leeway in being able to make sure that all the days of the month are assigned. But it also allows us greater leeway because of any emergency issues that may come up. Thank God I haven't had to get, haven't gotten sick or anyway, something like that, but I mean, we have more leeway to bring in somebody else to come in and take a docket over. We also have a rare opportunity in that the two people that we're going to recommend to you today, and by the way, we had a total of about thirteen applicants, and we interviewed eight, no, we interviewed four. Of those, two of these are basically slowing down their practice, and they're therefore more available to handle some of the, any of these emergencies. And for your recommendation, I would like to suggest that the city commission offer the part-time contracts to Mr. Arturo Sines and Mr. Alvaro Garcia. Now, they both have unique qualifications in that they both have been practicing criminal attorneys and other experience for various years. As a matter of fact, Mr. Garcia was a part-time municipal court judge for the City of Harlingen in the past. Mr. Sines was a police officer here in the City of Harlingen before he went to law school and attained his law degree. And as I say, that, well, they're not quite as old as I am, but they're slowing down in their practice. And so therefore, they will be available, and I hope that the city commission will look favorably on increasing, on increasing our format back to a four-judge pattern. It's not, in the sense, it's not really going to cost much more. There will be a slight increment increase because we won't be paying for their, taking CLE credit for the hours that they have to take. All judges are required to take credit. They will be going to a training sessions. The training sessions are held in various cities in the state of Texas, but most of them will be, these people will be going to the great South Padre Island, and so we would only have to pay an additional mileage from Harlingen to South Padre Island. Other than that, having two or three or four will not increase the amount of cost because every day needs to be handled. And so whether it's handled by two people or three or four, it's still going to be the same handling fee. An additional advantage is that of the two judges that are, we do have right now, and I do want to thank them for their service because it's, right now, they've been taking over a larger load, and that is Judge Javier Gonzalez from Brownsville and Judge Michael Zanka from Harlingen. Right now, though, Judge Zanka is actually living in South Padre Island. So both of these new individuals do live here in Harlingen, and they would be more readily available and access to if any of the police officers need a search warrant or arrest warrant after hours, they would be more readily accessible to them. So I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Basically, the compensation structure for those services that are actually performed.
Yes, correct.
It's like you stated, I mean, you'll have a greater availability of magistrates and judges to take care of the business of the city.
Correct. That's right. I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, for item number fourteen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the city manager's recommendation on the appointment of the two part-time judges as recommended.
I'll make a motion to approve the city manager's recommendation on the appointment of two part-time presiding municipal court judges, Alberto Garcia and Arturo H. Sines.
Your second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, board appointments. Any board appointments?
Yes. I have one reappointment on the senior citizens advisory board, Norma Castillo. And then on the golf course advisory board, we're going to be appointing Carlos Cortez. And on the municipal, municipal, no, I'm sorry, the, it would be the museum board, it would be Tim Ryan.
Senior citizens advisory board, David Preston. And senior citizens advisory board, Nora B. Young.
And I'd like to reappoint Michael Alex, the construction board of the justice office, Steve, downtown's criminal district.
Okay. There a motion to approve? I have no appointments at this point. At this time, have a motion to approve the appointments as recommended?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments as recommended.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, the only, one other item left? I'd recommend it on item sixteen A, that there's really no other information on that one, according to staff on that item. They did state that there may be some information on sixteen B. So, is there a motion that we go into executive session on sixteen B, which is pursuant to chapter five fifty-one, subchapter D of the government code, section fifty, five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultation with outside legal counsel regarding contract with the city attorney?
Sub move?
My second.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are, motion passes, and we are going to go into executive session. We'll go back into the back room and we'll get down and come back out. We have a motion to come back out of executive.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to come out, come out of executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, there was no action items left on the agenda. It was only discussion and consultation. I think the only item left were citizen communications?
I have one.
Before that, just the presiding officer, just make, make a note of the time you came out of executive session, which is six fifty, fifty-four P.M.
Add that for the record, we came out of executive session at six fifty-four P.M. Thank you.
Okay, the person that I have is Buck Bickley.
Yes. Am I on?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd say good afternoon, but it's good evening. Because of time restraints, I will forego all the protocol for addressing this distinguished panel. I'd like to discuss the concern that I have, and it may go unfounded because of limited information which is available to the public. I'd like to preface this topic by starting with something that is insightful to the logic that I employed.
Excuse me, may I just interrupt you real briefly? Could you please just state your, state your address, your, your physical address and your name again for the record?
My name is Buck Bickley. My physical address is one twenty-five Arcadia Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Now, move the Tom Clark back. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Let's see, where was it? Let me, let me go back a little bit. I'd like to preface this topic by starting with something that is insightful to the logic that I employed. What we do in the present, when informed by knowledge of the past, can shape the future in objectively better ways. Recently, you have called for evaluations of number of different positions in the city in management and council. So it's time for evaluations. With that said, I would ask you to consider an evaluation of the Economic Development Corporation. It seems to be doing a good job. Or is it? How would you know without sound data? In the twenty or so years that this has existed, has there ever been an evaluation? An audit? An audit of its performance? The type of evaluation which I refer to is one based upon quantitative measurements, using accounting and other parameters to measure performance. No phones allowed, please. Anyway, the fact is, are we getting a return on our, a return on our investment? Okay? I would say to you that doing an in-depth analysis of the EDC's history may reveal some useful results for guidance for the future in fulfilling its directed purpose. And clearly, you don't use the EDC to evaluate the EDC. Thank you for your time.
Any other, any other submit?
No.
Okay, there be no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.